eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. So I have the invocation this evening. I will just add to my sediments from last week's nine eleven commemoration. We as society, I teach a U B class on government. And every September around the, around the eleventh, I teach a class on emergency protocol, I C S, and how, how government functions in amidst of an ongoing crisis. And I have students who now, I think, my entire class this year was born after the events of, of nine eleven. And, you know, in, in, in understanding that, that history has its place in, in, you know, everybody's certainly cognizant and aware of what it meant. But what we forget sometimes is the, the fortitude of individuals to, who run into buildings while there's jet fuel and planes burning inside the building, who choose to run into help people who decide regularly that they need to go assist their brother firefighters at the ground zero scene in spite of later on suffering from issues of, of nine eleven syndrome and in actually losing their lives because of it. We oftentimes forget how, how, how much we rely on first responders to be that courageous. And I think that it's a good, this, this, these first couple of weeks in September, if there is anything else that we get out of commemorations surrounding those events, it should be first that there are those among us who are much braver than, than many of us and to whom we owe a debt of gratitude every time there's an event that affects police, fire, EMS, and emergency responses. And I will just say that over the past couple of years, we've lost some past Amherst fire chiefs to the, the, the syndromes and the, in the inhalation of particles at that site and at ground zero in Manhattan. And I would ask everybody just to take a moment of silence to think about the, the meaningfulness of, of first responders to our community and to remember those that Amherst lost in service to others in that event. That said, I would ask everybody, please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask our town clerk to please call a roll?
Supervisor Kopa?
Yes.
Deputy Supervisor Buckeye?
Here.
Councilmember Berger?
Here.
Councilmember Levin? And Councilmember Zucala?
Here.
Next, I would motion to adopt the minutes from Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have no proclamations or announcements this, this evening. We have two public hearings. The first is Resolution seven seventy-four, which is a town culvert replacement, a bond resolution in the amount of a hundred thousand. A motion to open that public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Chris Schragel. I work for the Towns Engineering Department. This first public hearing before you is in reference to town culvert replacement projects. This is a highway district bond. The presentation tonight will include project summary, project goal with a concentration on Frankhauser culvert, project schedule, financials, as well as tax impacts. For the project summary, the town of Amherst owns and maintains hundreds of stormwater culverts townwide. Stormwater culverts are typically pipes or concrete boxes that allow water to flow freely under roads, driveways, trails, et cetera. Over time, these culverts deteriorate and begin to show signs of structural damage. The Highway Department then identifies these culverts in poor condition and makes a request to the Engineering Department for further review. Typically, what is done in that case is a condition study and load rating report is conducted and ultimately determination is made if that structure can be left in disrepair, if it is operating at, at an acceptable level, if that structure can be repaired to regain its structural integrity, and finally, if that structure requires complete replacement. This bond action is really addressing that third bullet, a complete replacement. The project goal is to complete design plans and documents for the full replacement of stormwater culverts townwide, where those condition and load rating reports have indicated replacement is necessary. This project is intended to design those culverts as needed townwide with the concentration immediately for the culvert located under Frankhauser Road. As there was December fifth study from last year that concluded that that Frankhauser culvert should be replaced due to significant deterioration of that structure. Specific to Frankhauser, that is located off Sharon Drive between Sharon, Miller Support, and Maple. And that, uh, uh, is, there's a town ditch that runs under Frankhauser and that's where the culvert is located. The, this picture, this slide is to illustrate the condition of that Frankhauser culvert as it, as it appears today. You have some significant deterioration along the bolt lines with heavy corrosion, as well as the invert completely separating from the, the pipe at the bottom. Additionally, you have a, a large void where two pipe sections are connected. So the project schedule is to authorize that bond tonight. We will begin engineer procurement shortly thereafter, where we will then design at the end of this year and early into next year. And then, this is not intended for construction. That will require a separate bond action or a Bridge New York grant. We have been successful in the past in obtaining Bridge New York grants and we will continue to apply. In reference to the financials, the design overall, not specifically for Frankhauser, but for all townwide culverts will be ninety-nine thousand five hundred, with five hundred going to legal admin for a total bond cost of one hundred thousand dollars. Bond term being five years. That's approximately forty-four cents per year for a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar property. With that, I'll open it up for questions and comments.
Questions from this board first?
I think those pictures said it all.
On the Frankhauser project, yeah, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to construe this as being a design limited to Frankhauser. Obviously, Frankhauser needs to be replaced and fully replaced, but we want to have design-ready implementations for all the culverts. I think Chris has done a good job of kind of running up to that point. And so I, I think this is a good project. Are there any other questions or comments from this board? If not, I would open it up to residents who wish to comment on the culvert replacement bond action. Sorry, you have to come up and ask. I don't know offhand on Frankhauser.
I don't know either.
So, but, you know, this is why we're moving forward with this project. So there's a lot of roads or culverts that were constructed prior to them being turned over to the town by private sector developers or even county, the county or state. So we're, we're left kind of looking at all of our existing conditions. This is certainly one of them that we have looked at in earnest. Anything further comments-wise? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna first motion to adopt the seeker findings associated with the bond action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I would motion to adopt the, the culvert, oh, sorry. Next, I would motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would motion the culvert replace to approve the culvert replacement bond action as it appeared.
Second.
And on the question, I may ask our town clerk for a voice vote, please.
Supervisor Kopa?
Yes.
Deputy Supervisor Buckeye?
Yes.
Councilmember Berger?
Yes.
Councilmember Levin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Zucala?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is Resolution seven seventy-five, which is a request for a special use permit for tier three solar energy system at eight hundred and eight fifty New Road. So I'm gonna motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And could you just introduce yourselves, please?
Yes, my name is Mark Kenward. I'm with Erdman Anthony Consulting Engineers. We are assisting the project developer of this site, Soul Source Power, with the permitting, local permitting for this project. The subject project is, is classified by the Town of Amherst zoning law as a tier three solar energy system. It is located on the west side of New Road, approximately eight hundred feet north of it, of Miller Support Highway. The site is currently zoned suburban agricultural, which is, which allows solar installation facilities such as this by a special use permit that is approved by the Town Board. Next slide, please. So, so right now, the subject site is vacant with scattered trees and very thinly forested in many places. The site includes two federal jurisdictional wetland areas and is located within a hundred-year flood plain. The site is just under fifty-two acres and we are proposing approximately twenty-seven and a half of that to be developed as a fenced solar array. Along New Road, there is approximately eight hundred sixty-seven feet of road frontage. So the, the array extends for almost the full width of that frontage. In the area are single-family residences and vacant land. The single-family residences are generally on the east side of New Road and just north of the site along New Road as well. To the south, there's a utility right away owned by, I believe it's New York State Electric and Gas. There's a gas line, gas transmission line passing through there from east to west in parallel with the property line. To the west are single-family residences over on Hopkins Road, I believe it is, and vacant still ag lands such as this here, as I just pointed out. Next slide, please. So this project consists of the construction of a tier three solar energy system that will generate five megawatts of power, and that's the A C rating of it, the alternating current rating. There's an access road located in the southeast corner of the site that will provide access to the site from New Road, the solar equipment and the associated pads interior to the site. The array will be located on twenty-seven and a half acres of land. A fence will surround the entire project site area and vegetative screening will be used along all property lines to conceal the array. That vegetative screening consists of existing vegetation. And then along the front, along the front of the site, existing vegetation will be maintained to the extent practical, but also a high degree or high level of new vegetative screening will be installed, including some berms to store topsoil that's taken out of the site. Those berms will be planted with both trees and shrubs. I'll have some visual simulations of that in more detail in a moment. As I noted earlier, this tier three solar energy system requires the issuance of a special use permit by the Town Board pursuant to Article eight dash six one D of the zoning ordinance. This is a site plan of the site. The green, the darker green represents existing vegetation that will remain. One of the wetlands is, I mentioned, is right here in the middle of this existing vegetated area. The other wetland is over here in a small area. It's a smaller one over in this area here, more on the southwest side. Just to orient you north is up. This on the left, on the right side here is a blow-up of the proposed vegetation along the New Road frontage. The site, the array is set back a hundred feet from New Road and along the fence line just outside the array that there'll be some topsoil, berms have made it, constructed from topsoil, excavated from the site for the road and equipment pads to be stored there permanently for future site restoration. Those berms will be vegetated with conifers and shrubs and upon their maturity in five years, the site will be, we have very limited visibility from New Road and the neighbors across the road. Next slide, next slide, please. Here's another plan of the developed area. You can see the solar array is kind of a horseshoe shape here all surrounded by fencing. This north, this vegetation here, existing vegetation, wetland will still remain open and unobstructed. This, the other wetland is over in this area here. The entrance is over here on the southeast corner, where there is an equipment pad for interconnection and one proposed pole to accomplish the interconnection to the existing electrical lines along the west side of New Road. So I provided a deep, a blow-up or detail of the landscaping plan there. You can see there are literally dozens and dozens of different kinds of trees and shrubs proposed to assist in screening the site from road, from view by, along motor, from motorists on New Road as well as the residents across the road. Next slide, please. So here we have some visual simulations. This is looking into the site from the southeast corner. This is the driveway for access to the NICEG utility corridor. This is our proposed driveway right here. And this is conditioned if there were no screening at all. Next slide, please. And as you can see, this is looking same direction with ten years of growth on the proposed vegetation. And you can see it's expected to do a very adequate job of screening the site from this corner of New Road as well as the abutting neighbor to the, to the south here. Next slide. This is looking southwest at the array from more or less the north, the northern end of the New Road frontage, looking into the site. This is with no landscape mitigation whatsoever. Existing vegetation here is, will remain. Next slide. This shows the expected ten-year growth of proposed vegetation with the array barely noticeable right here. And this is, this is the, as I said, this is the expected growth or outcome of the proposed vegetative screening plan. I think it's a very aggressive or very good plan. And there is, by town requirement, a condition in place that should there be any complaints about the array being visible, they have to be addressed. And there is a, there is a plan in place to do so as this was a requirement of the Planning Department in the review of the site plans. Next slide. Are we at the end? We're at the end. I'm gonna turn it over to Lee McIntyre of Soul Source Power. She is the project developer and she has a few things to offer up about the site. Thank you.
I'm Lee McIntyre. I'm a project developer with Soul Source Power. I introduced Soul Source before, but I just want to cover again that we're a New York-based company. We are women and veteran-owned. We are out of Troy, New York, and we do community solar installations across the state of New York. So we originally cited this property because of its unique features. It is adjacent to utility lines that can host a solar farm of this size. We also saw that it was zoned for it. The property was no longer being farmed and there was existing vegetation on it. So the, the existing vegetation helps to screen the project in addition to the vegetation that we've proposed for the plantings and the berm. We also cited it because it's in a town that has seen a solar array before. You've permitted a project before and you're familiar with it. In doing this, solar brings a lot of benefits to the community and it's not just environmental, but obviously, environmental is the, the biggest benefit that we can all recognize. But there's other benefits too. And one of those is that through this project, we will assume the cost of upgrading the electrical infrastructure in the area and the lines that are coming to the site, the utility lines on New Road. In addition to that, we plan to enter into a pilot agreement. We're working with the Amherst I D A on a pilot agreement for the school, the town, and the county and a community benefit agreement that we want to enter into with the town as well. So there's also some benefits to the neighboring areas as well. This type of solar farm is part of the community solar program in New York, which I think we talked about before when we were talking about the zoning. But community solar is a program that New York established so that residents and small businesses can take part in the benefits from solar and in the cost savings. So neighbors, anyone in the community can subscribe to the energy produced from the solar array at a discount on their electricity bill. So thank you so much for having us tonight.
No, no problem. I, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I'm sure a couple of the board members have questions. I have a few myself. So the first is, is, is your organization gonna own or lease the site?
So we are under an option to lease the site. We'll be leasing the site for a period of twenty-five years with four, five-year extensions built into the contract.
Is there a bond associated with the project? Should the company decide not to, with, with regards to removal of the solar? Should the company decide not to extend the terms of lease?
So there is a bond in the event that us or the company owning the solar array defaults and does not remove the solar farm and it's not operational for a certain amount of time or if during construction it is abandoned. We are responsible for removal of the site itself. So at the end of the lifetime of the system, we would go in, remove it, and restore the land according to the guidance from New York Ag and Markets for farmland. Also, the, there will be a bond posted with the town on the bond. That's part of the decommissioning plan that was submitted. So a bond will be posted prior to pulling the permit before construction starts.
Do you know the amount of that bond for this project? Yeah.
We can, we can check on that.
Because I'm gonna want to see that, plus the escalation built in for removal at some point.
Yes, and the bond is renewed every year. The costs can be revisited. So if the costs are not covering the full cost of decommissioning the system, the bond can be renewed and it can be increased.
What is your plan to maintain active agriculture on the site?
So we plan to work with local sheep farmers. We've spoken with a local sheep farmer who's working with the project on Shellis Road. And there is a national organization of sheep grazers in America that have identified sheep farmers that are doing solar grazing. So we've reached out to a few of the farmers that do that out of not too far from the site, I believe. I can't remember the towns now, but we did reach out to them. So we plan to enter into a contract and we'll present that contract to the town prior to pulling the permit for construction as well.
So before we issue a special use permit, you'll have contracted with somebody?
We would, if you made it a condition on approval, we would be able to provide the contract after that before we can start construction.
There are some differences between this location and Shellis Road. Shellis Road, south side of Shellis Road backs up to the two, to the nine ninety. So it's a, it's an interstate. There was kind of agreements or conversations with immediate neighbors. Have you had those conversations with the immediate neighbors?
We have had conversations post some public hearings and I've given out my contact information as well.
Because we're probably going to tell you that we want you to have that before we're willing to consider a vote on this subject.
Okay.
The next piece of the puzzle is for me. And I'm a, look, you know, I'm not, not the, the, the son of a farmer, but I'm the in-law of a farmer. So I still have a no foods, no farms bumper sticker in my desk. So I'm gonna want to know that you have an agreement in place for this to have active ag on it, right? Otherwise, I'm not gonna ask the Town Board to vote on a special use permit. And it's at least gonna be a condition of the special use permit. The other differentiating factor between Shellis Road and this project is that the Shellis Road site was in our largest fire district, Gutsville Fire. This is in our smallest fire district. So I'm, I'm kind of curious as to what equipment would be needed by a fire district with primary responsibilities to a site? Do you have a battery on site?
We do not have a battery on site.
Do you have a plan for transmission? Are you feeding the grid at New Road? Are you using the NICEG corridor?
We are feeding the utility lines off of New Road.
So you're gonna end up with either a pad-mounted or pole-mounted transformer?
Pad-mounted, yep.
The district does not have a ladder, can't suppress from above? Do you, and I, you know, while the Fire Chiefs Association has signed off on it, is there an agreement in place with North Amherst fires to how this site would be acted upon with them as a primary district?
There is not currently an agreement, but we can enter into an agreement or agree to a condition on approval that we will enter into an agreement or agree to a certain amount of training with them as well.
The drainage for this site, do you plan to raise the elevation in the land?
No, we do plan to position the electrical pads above the base flood elevation, though, to accommodate the fact that this project is in a flood plain and one foot below the base flood elevation.
So the, the, the pads will actually be raised?
Yes.
The majority of the site's pads?
I'm sorry?
The majority of the site is pads, right? Is it continuous pad underneath? No? Okay.
These little locations right here, that's an equipment pad.
Oh, oh, those, you're not pat, putting pads underneath the, the actual solar?
No, they're, they're, uh, equipment pads where the V C voltage comes into these equipment pad areas. And then I believe it's converted to A C. But out here to another equipment pad, just inside the fenced array. And then just outside the fence, the equipment way. Yet another equipment pad, which is international grid with their interconnection. And then one new pole is set in line with the other poles.
Have you spoken to the county about the, about New Road itself or drainage associated with New Road?
Oh, we have, we have yet to submit for driveway application.
Okay.
But we have, have a stronger provision of management plan under review from the town, which demonstrates that there is no change on our site three or four.
It's not great now, so you might have to make it better? Is where I'm going with that?
That will be difficult because that means some kind of retention. We're already pretty well.
I mean, again, we can wait and see. You have a, you know, I assume you're, you're, you're working with engineering on the, right? So, but my curiosity is the elevations of New Road itself. It's not a road that's built up typically and crowned like you would expect a county road. So I'm, I'm worried about washout on the street?
Well, the only, the only pavement we were, yeah, we were, yeah, the edge of the site is the driveway, which is right here outside the fence. Now, the requirement of the, through the, the comment we got through the planning department that we had to have paved access out here. Fence is right here with this driveway access into the site.
Can you go back to the overall site plan showing the, the, the conditions around it, surrounding the parcel again?
This one?
Yeah. So the property just south of your property? I know that you've got the, the, the NICEG, the NICEG easement. What is that, what is that very, what is that next southern parcel?
This parcel here is a residential parcel. And this here is just a...
The residential parcels south of the site?
Yeah.
That are deep, deep residential parcels?
And that, that's one residential parcel. We've had conversations with the Town Board.
The last question I had is you mentioned a berm at some point during your conversation. Where is that berm?
Right here, these dotted lines represent the topsoil storage berms. Take the topsoil out, put these gravel, these gravel access roads in, up to the equipment pads.
Okay.
Store it in these berms here.
So...
And then the berms are also being planted. When the site is decommissioned...
I get it, but I'm, so, so if we, if we already established... I get it, but I'm, so, so if we, if we already established that New Road is low and that the road could wash out, now you build a berm, right? You're basically building a weir so that any, any water condition on New Road can no longer sheet drain across your site?
Oh, it doesn't because there's a roadside ditch along New Road now. It appears to drain.
It appears to drain?
It appears to drain. Of course, it drains north and of course it drains south.
I'm not sure that that ditch, is that been maintained recently?
Oh, it's, it's well defined in our survey and mapping.
That's a bad Lucy question.
We have a, well, he would make it is a county road.
Oh, it's the county ditch, okay.
I have a lot of concerns about drainage at that site because if you berm up and then there's a, that, that ditch isn't maintained by the county, like, we're just trapping water on New Road. And if the ditch overflows, then the road's going to... I, I mean, right now, your site is lower than a road hypothetically, so at least there's an opportunity to sheet drain on the site. We're essentially stopping that.
The greatest study we show though, so the greatest goes off in all four directions from the site.
Right, but I'm saying that if you, if the road drains through the ditch, the ditch is full and it continues to sheet drain over your site, you're basically building a levee.
Well, that's why we don't have the berms fully connected right, right here. This is an area where it seems to be kind of a low point.
Okay.
So we didn't connect these berms up here because we did not want to break that down. But they, they have opportunity overflow back into our solar array field here, here and even here.
I mean, your, your low point for the entire road is in that wetlands area right now, right? That's sort of the, the low point for that entire water, that, that entire...
This, yeah, these wetlands here are low points.
Right. So right now, water runs across that plain to your wetlands.
Yep. And this is, this is a finger of wetland right here.
You're...
That we were, we're building arrays over, but we're not impacting it because...
You're, you're not grading at all on that front side of arrays? It's just going to be...
No. And it's, the panels themselves are on screws, so there's no concrete that goes into the ground onto the panels. They get screwed in and the only impermeable surface on the site would be the paved road coming in and then the two concrete pads.
Yeah, it's here.
I, I just don't see how the berms don't make the road worse, but that said, that, that's the long list of questions that I had. I'm going to ask any of the, my fellow town board members if they haven't had, if they have a question that I haven't exhausted first.
I've sat through multiple presentations on the project.
I guess one last question would be the last project that we had ended up contracting with BMHA, the Buffalo Municipal Housing Authority, as a supplier. Can I ask who the direct contract for this one is?
That hasn't currently been set up yet. There are programs through the federal government for low-income housing offtake of the electricity. So we will be applying for that, but we don't have those contracts. They're typically set up at a later stage closer to construction, to mid-construction.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask the audience if they have questions. I'm going to, so what I'm going to ask you to do is please come forward. I'm going to ask you to state your name and address for the record. And I see a couple of questions in the back, then we'll come back down front here, sir, if that's okay. Yep, please come on, come forward.
Good evening. My name is Sally Blazinski. I live at 905 New Road, directly across the street. This is one of my neighbors, Heidi Butter, 885 New Road. We're strongly opposed to this. We've never been approached by the solar company. I have probably too many concerns to go over tonight, but I'm going to hit a few of them. There have been several fires already in New York State this year with solar farms.
One of them was on our site.
Yeah.
It wasn't up and running at that point.
Understood. Okay.
So I'm also curious about whether or not the Amherst Fire Department is prepared to handle stuff like that. The last meeting that I was at was before the site board and a question was asked by one of the members concerning toxic metals. And I don't believe it was answered, yet they voted that night to approve it or to come forward.
When you say toxic metals, are you referring to...
If there were a fire, cadmium was brought up, I believe, lead, if there's a fire. One of the fires more recently in July, our governor ordered a stay in place for everybody within a mile of that fire for fear of toxic fumes. That's a huge concern to us. My, doing some research, I believe the standard recommendation for building next to a solar farm for a residence is usually 1.2 miles away, minimum of 500 meters. My house and my neighbors is inside of 200 feet, which is a big concern. Also, according to Town of Amherst General Legislation and Zoning for Special Use Permit, my understanding is that the review criteria includes that it has to be compatible with existing adjacent and nearby property and not, it will not tend to depreciate the value of our homes. I, through lots of hours of research, no one wants to buy a house within 200 feet of a solar farm. It not only depreciates the value, it makes it pretty much useless if you're going to sell it. We haven't been, nothing has been addressed as far as any compensation to the nearby neighbors, which is a concern. We have a daycare on the corner. Concerned about that, the wetlands.
Wetlands was also concerned. The water levels right now in those ditches, we get 3/4 days worth of rain, the ditches are full.
They've, they've come up on our property. Our, our, we're already flooding. We have septic systems there. I mean, it's just not a good condition to have something like this across the street. It affects our quality of life, actually. Nobody has addressed the, not the more serious, but even the less serious health effects. Headaches, sore throats, all kinds, small things, earaches.
So, so I, I think that, again, you know, I can't speak for the board, but in the past, we've, we've asked, we've asked petitioners to meet with the neighbors and come back to us with that. And I know you said they haven't. And that, I'm comfortable with that being an outcome from today. But I, I understand about the drainage issue because I've, I've seen New Road function or not function correctly on drainage. I, I think that we have a little bit of work to do here to address some of those concerns, which is why we have the, the format of this coming to the town board first, so as our, not first, but as a, as a special use permit. So, so we'll continue to work on that. This public hearing, we're not voting tonight. We'll, we'll be adjourning the public hearing, keeping it open so that we can address some of these issues.
Sir, it also, it will change the character of the neighborhood. It's peaceful there, it's quiet. To have that across the street and wait 10 years for trees to possibly cover a height of the 16 feet, I believe those solar panels are, 16 feet?
They're 18.
They're 18 feet.
I, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
From, it's almost impossible, in my opinion, to cover it because it goes back so many acres that I don't know how it'll ever block our view.
So again, I, I think that there's certainly some work to do here. It looks like you're reading off of a...
A few things that I noted, that's all.
Are those in an email to the town board?
Uh, no.
If you put those in an email to the town board, we'll clock that in as a portion of the public hearing. Okay? As a record document.
Okay, and along with some other things I have.
Yep.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, if you wish.
Hi, my name is Chris Wiles. I live at 861 New Road, directly across from this. I think she touched on most of the points that the neighbors that I've spoken with have been concerned about. The loss of property value is certainly a huge consideration. The drainage is a huge consideration. Also, there was a mention at the last meeting about a glare study. I haven't heard anything about the results of a glare study because no one knows how, you know, the, the 990 project, there's no neighbors, it's backing up to a highway.
I don't know what, what the last meeting you're referring to is. Is that a planning board?
Planning board.
A planning board meeting? Okay, thank you. Was there any planning board minutes from, did I miss that?
Someone did ask about it, but there was a response to it. I think we should have the petitioner respond to some of the questions.
Yeah, we will. They're going to get a chance to come up and respond to some.
So, I, I just want to be on record as saying that I'm not anti-development. I know a lot of times people get up here and it's like, we don't want anything out there. That's not true. So I just want that on record that I'm not anti-development. But in this project, there's nothing that's going to increase the quality of my life. It's not going to increase my property value, it's not going to help out my drainage, I'm not going to get a break on my energy bill. There's literally nothing that anybody has shown me so far to say it's going to be better for me. You know, it's one thing to say it's going to stay the same or maybe not worse, but I haven't heard anybody say that this is going to be better for us, it's going to be beneficial for the neighbors in this, this area. So the one thing that I did want to address is about the fire. That gas line is sitting there. The fire in Lime, New York burned for four hours because there was a battery backup and they didn't know how to put it out. We, we can't have any fire burning next to that gas line for four minutes.
Again, I, I, I asked that question because of what I...
So that was just one of the things that you addressed and I appreciate all your concerns that you brought up.
So the, so, so I was mistaken earlier when I said send it to the town board. You should also copy the town clerk's office because they actually do the record of the, of the public hearing. So if you can, when you send an email, send it to the clerk's office as well. But, so I'm going to give the, the petitioner an opportunity to try to address some of these items and, you know, we'll be, it sounds like we'll be back talking about this, you know, at, at future board meetings. So, but thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yeah?
There is a condition here that the petition requires mitigating the flare due to wide degree of long office, you know, road, or, 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 or supplementing additional maintenance.
Okay.
In addition to the planning boards.
So is there anybody else from the audience before I ask the petitioner to come back up? If you would.
There is a glare study that was submitted to the planning board, so that can be reviewed on the website. The fires, there was a fire at the Shellis Road site. There is training that we can do with the firefighters that should have been done with the installation of the other solar array, but we can supplement any additional training. The...
Supplementing training and having the right equipment are two different, or having the availability of firefighters in that district are two different things.
I think we would need to work with the fire department on that and, and we can agree to, to do that. I don't know what the, the outstanding issues are now, so we should get them out and, and make sure that we can address them.
Well, again, so the, the last fire was the town's largest fire department, right? We have...
Right.
Big department at the center of town who deals with UB solar installations. This is a very small fire company.
Right.
Small rural company, so you're going to need to, to do that. But, okay, continue, please.
In terms of the battery storage fires, there's no battery storage on this site. There are no known health effects from solar arrays. There was a condition that was put into the resolution about CADMAM panels that was brought up at the last planning board meeting. CADMAM telluride panels make up about 2% to 5% of the market for solar panels. They're being phased out. We have agreed as a condition on approval not to use those solar panels.
Okay.
In the event of a fire, any toxic metals, all of the components of the solar array in terms of the toxic metals are encapsulated and would remain so in a fire. And there are material safety data sheets and a letter that we provided to the planning department detailing that. We are providing compensation to the community through the pilot agreement and eventually through a community benefit agreement as well. The arrays are quiet, they operate quietly once construction is done. They generally don't make any noise. It's, tends to be described as when you're standing at the fence line, the sound of rustling leaves, that level of decibels from the inverters. With this site, there isn't a whole lot of development that you could do with it. It is in the 100-year flood plain, it is a whole foot below the base flood elevation. The farming on the property has been abandoned. There just isn't a lot that you can do with the property. The condition of the trees on the property are dead and dying. We have proposed to do plantings, not just around the array, but also in the wetlands, 100 shrubs per acre in that area to promote growth of healthy, non-invasive wetland species. And we would be happy to host a community forum outside of the public hearings as well to talk with everyone. And I encourage everyone to reach out to me. I have cards here and my cellphone is on them as long as, as well as my email. But I will send a letter to all of the neighbors, the same list that was contacted about the public hearing, and we'll hold just a forum with us and with the neighbors as well before the, the next planning board or the next town board meeting.
Last question I would have is, is grid availability in this site? Obviously, you seem to think that there's good availability for the grid to accept this.
Yes.
Do you have a study that shows that availability and the remaining balance of availability for future projects?
So it, it was submitted to the planning department. Yep, that study was completed. There is potentially a, a little bit more space available. The, the condition of the space that's available on the grid is dependent on the demands of the area. So if there was a manufacturing facility or additional large facilities that had a high electrical demand, they would install additional infrastructure that would add to that capacity. I don't think the Amherst has the space for that necessarily, so there isn't a whole lot of capacity with what is left on the grid right now.
One of my concerns is that if the town decided to outfit a large building with solar in that area, that we are concerned, we, we could be running sort of slim on capacity after a couple of these sites open and choke ourselves as a municipality. So that's something else that I'm going to want to take a hard look at. So what I would say is I would leave it at this. I, I think that I'm going to want to see a very specific plan for, even if you don't have a contract yet, for active ag. That's, that's my personal priority one on all this stuff. I understand that you are going to retain stormwater onsite, but I don't buy the, the, the infrastructure on New Road doesn't rely on this site to sheet drain New Road, and I have concern about that and the location of the berms. So I would come back with a drainage plan that also shows how that works. We're going to want to see the direction and travel of stormwater runoff if that, if that, if those, if those ditches fail, what happens then? You need to have a conversation with the fire chief and president at North Amherst Fire and be able to describe that specifically to us with a, a letter or at least a phone call or some kind of transmission, email from the fire chief saying that they have the equipment, the resources and the availability to deal with a fire similar to Shellis Road. And you need to have a meeting with neighbors. Our notice is 600 feet. I would ask you to do the same. And, and then come back once you have that kind of idea worked out. Curious as to how the pilot and the community benefit agreement might work. I know I've personally been a part of one from a consultant standpoint in Eden on behalf of the town. Their, theirs was a favorable, I think, result. I think you should take a look at that one. And then we'll deal with making sure that the planning board... making sure that the planning board, um, components of glare and no cadmium panels and those types of things get recorded, but. So I'd ask, uh, there's, it's a little bit of laundry list, um, but, um, I'm going to motion to adjourn the public hearing, um, and await some of those responses before we meet again.
That works. Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, the next items on the agenda is public expression. It's an opportunity, uh, for residents to comment on manners involving the town other than those pertinent to tonight's public hearings. Uh, speakers are limited to three minutes. There is a, a list here, and I'm sure there's another list up there. Um, we'll start with those lists. I'm gonna motion to open public expression at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, Monica, um, Seminow, did I pronounce that correctly? Sorry, Semino, thank you, please. And I am gonna ask you to state your name and, and address every time you come up, just so that we have, because it is, uh, public record.
My name is Monica Semino. I live on ninety-one Westfield Road, Amherst, New York, and we are here today regarding the speed hump issue. Uh, we are all opposed to having speed bumps installed on Westfield Road. Um, personally, myself, I did write a letter to all of you I sent last week. I sent, uh, Mr. Lucy a letter earlier in the summer as well, and just wanted to come here tonight to just really share that many of our neighbors on the street are opposed to having speed bumps. Uh, certainly, I have a number of items that I did point out in my letter, but, uh, reduced emergency vehicle response time, increased noise, the speed bump is not directly outside of my house, but right to the left, so it's my neighbor's house, it's immediately in front of. I know they wanted to be here today. Several of our neighbors wanted to come, but they weren't able to, to let you all know that they are opposed to the speed bumps. But one thing I want to mention is, I do feel that having a speed bump particularly on a hill, and it's a steep hill, is a very, you know, it's not a, it's a safety hazard. And when there's snow on the road, there's certainly going to be cars that don't observe the signage and could be going too fast and possibly veer into, onto my property. I have two small children and, uh, two young children, and that's definitely something that is of great concern to me. Um, and, and it is currently, the placement is right on part of the hill, so one of the three bumps. Um, so we do feel like that's a, a, a great concern, my husband and I. Um, a- and definitely one of the things that, you know, the others shared is, um, that just spoke was the reduction of property value. That's definitely a concern of mine as well. Uh, that's something that I did do a lot of research on this matter, and I do feel that that's a, a concern that should be taken into consideration. Um, but lastly, I just want to mention that I don't feel that this was properly communicated or handled. Um, from what I gather, majority of the people that I know on the street do not want speed bumps, so we would really like that to be taken into consideration. And the last communication I heard was, they will be happening. So we would really like and appreciate it if that was something that could be further considered. Um, but I know my neighbors also want to speak, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so are we going in, in order to Janet and Karen, or?
Yes, I'm Janet DeCico.
Okay, please go ahead.
I live at seventy-nine Westfield, um, two doors down, so the speed hump comes right between our house and the Seminos. Um, so I've lived on the street for twenty-five years. We bought our house twenty-five years ago, and, um, we felt like it was a very safe neighborhood. We loved our street, we still do. Um, our lots are two hundred and twenty-five feet deep, so most kids are playing in the backyards, not the front yards. Additionally, we have a sidewalk with a fifteen-foot verge, road verge, between the road and the sidewalk. And I can tell you, I've never seen children play in that area. So as far as safety is concerned, on, on the average day, are there people who speed down the street, just like every other street in Amherst? Of course there are. But I don't think that it's any greater concern. I think it would be a greater concern on a street where they didn't have a sidewalk with a verge and very deep backyards, which we all have. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. And then, um, another concern was what Monica also mentioned with the property values. Um, I don't, I don't see why we would do anything to decrease our property values at this point. And also, for me, a big concern is the noise level. Um-
So-
Every sin- go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so I understand, um, all the comments. I'm, I'm not sure I agree on the property value. Uh, there are cities who saw marked improvements property value because of the, the, the slowing of traffic. So I, I don't want to just, I don't want to keep recirculating that unless you've got some data that I can, that we can distribute.
I, I can't, I don't have anything for you to distribute, but I will tell you that on the streets where I've seen the speed bumps put in in Buffalo, those are streets where kids don't have big yards to play in, where the kids might be playing in the streets.
And those points make sense. I just, again, I just don't want to perpetuate the loss of property value. I-
Okay.
Okay.
I understand. So because our yards are so big, um, we, we don't have the kind of neighborhood, I don't know if you've been down Westfield, but-
I have.
Kids don't set up nets to play hockey and, you know, basketball and stuff on the street. That happens in the yards. And so, um, I just-
True.
That part isn't a safety concern. Um, and then the noise is an issue too. Every single time a car goes down, we're gonna hear it, but also, you know, when you do get the delivery vehicles that are bigger, and you do get, uh, landscaping trucks that come through with all their equipment, it's going to be a lot, um, right in front of my house personally, but for everyone's sake. I just, I don't understand what was the cause to, to say, we should do this and let's start with Westfield.
Um, I, I can't speak for the entirety of the project. Uh, I, I know that Traffic and Safety has looked at a series of streets that are traditionally cut-through streets and saw speeds in excess of forty miles an hour, I think, on that street as a median. Um, and so, you know, forty mile an hour speed is certainly excessive, and, um, that was the, the rationale on the recommendation. Um, after that, you know, there's a vetting process that they go through and ultimately, you know, I, I hate to pick on highway. I mean, ultimately, Pat can say no, or he can say yes on these things. Um, I know he has, that's, that's a quite a burden that a highway superintendent has to bear. Um, but, you know, I, I think that the really, the, what this board's been presented as, um, is that the, the speed was in excess of forty, um, and the, uh, Aggrisville Fire District, which had primary response, um, attributed the idea of a vehicular accident with a pedestrian is more of a concern than their, um, than their response time. Um, that's, again, we, we're only presented a portion of everything, um, along with a traffic and safety recommendation. I don't know if Pat, if you want to speak to anything else about that?
Yeah, you can.
Sure, that's fine.
Well.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, please, I interrupted you.
That's okay.
Okay.
That was basically what I wanted to say, but if, if the property value isn't an issue, then, you know, similar to where you asked me if I had data for that, I'd like to see data that shows that it's not going to-
Understood.
Happen.
Okay, yep.
Hello, my name is Karen Drilling, and I live at one thirty-nine Westfield. I have lived on Westfield Road and Ivyhurst Circle my whole entire life, and I can't recall where there has ever been an accident on Westfield or Ivyhurst due to a car speeding and hitting a child. I'm assuming that's primarily the purpose of the speed bumps is to protect our children, and I really cannot recall an accident ever happening in sixty-five plus years. Um, my other concern is, the speed hump is going to be directly in front of my house. There's a white circle spray painted where the sign is going to be right in front of my, in front of my house. I am opposed to the speed humps, but if we are going to have them, I would ask that, um, consideration be given. I know my neighbor across, directly across the street where the speed hump is, she is also not in favor of them. However, my neighbor directly next door has three children, they are in favor of the speed hump. The other person, other neighbor across from them, he is in favor of the speed hump, and he even said he would not mind having the signage on his property. So if we are going to go ahead with them, rather, I know, I realize they do have to be strategically placed, but I would also give consideration to people who are opposed to them and not have them directly outside their door. Thank you.
Hello, my name, well, thanks. Hello, my name is Kate Schmidt, and I live at one thirty-six Westfield Road. I've been an Amherst resident for seventeen years, living on Westfield. And then we were notified last year by superintendent, highway superintendent Lacy that speed humps-
Can I ask you to lower the mic a little bit more?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kind of the story of my life. Um, I'm against speed humps on Westfield. I'm among my neighbors who have opposed this from the beginning. I love living on Westfield Road because it is quiet and peaceful. Speed humps will change all that. It is well documented that speed humps create lots of noise as drivers go thunk-thunking over them day and night, including trucks, trailers, et cetera. Also, speed humps make effective snow plowing much more difficult. In one of his letters, Superintendent Lacy cited that people sometimes drive up onto lawns to avoid the speed humps. And beyond all of that, I simply find them a very annoying hindrance. However, I also have a much more personal reason that I generally don't share with people. I have a traumatic brain injury. It resulted from a fall over two years ago on my street, um, due to a streetlight that was out and some cracked sidewalk. Since that moment, my life changed dramatically. Due to my many cognitive and physical problems, I had to leave my job as a second grade teacher. My entire life is now centered on healing and recovery. Every day, I fight through the pain in my head, neck and back, trying my very best to recover. Regular daytime rest is essential. For me, the speed humps will be truly terrible. Every speed hump causes me physical pain when I drive over them. I can't drive right now, but when my husband takes me. The middle speed hump for this project is designated to be right next to my house. I'm at one thirty-six, it's at one forty-two, across from Kate. The constant noise will feel like torture to me, not allowing me to rest, recuperate during the day, or sleep at night. So for me, this issue is extremely important. I've opposed to it since the very beginning. Um, there was talk that a neighbor would do a voluntary poll to see how neighbors felt. That was very kind of her to do, that shouldn't have been left to a resident. And as a result, she tried to do it as best she could, but got a really frightening response from one particular resident and didn't feel safe doing it on her own anymore. So we never did get a poll, and certainly not an official poll, um, about speed humps. And for me, let's just find a better solution. I'm a mom and a teacher. My whole life has been dedicated to children, and it seems to me that people don't necessarily want speed humps. They want a way to mitigate speeding. But speed humps are the only solution that has been offered. Yet I've researched the effects of speed humps on streets and communities, and many communities dislike them so much, they've replaced them with alternative traffic calming measures. Why have those not been raised? I really do want to work together with all of my neighbors who want speeds mitigated, but also want to maintain our high quality of life. I want to work with our neighbors and the town to find a solution that will work for everyone.
Let me ask, um, our highway superintendent.
Pat Lucy, highway superintendent, town of Amherst. First of all, I want to make it very clear, me as a highway superintendent personally, I am no, I'm not in favor of speed humps. I've been against them every time, uh, especially the Traffic Safety Board has suggested that they be installed somewhere, okay? I'm in the, the business of making roads smooth and safe, not putting obstacles in roads. Um, as we all know, and we've addressed the board about this before, Chris Frager and I, uh, Traffic Safety did do a study on Westfield. It had some of the highest speeding numbers of any thirty mile an hour road in the town that they've ever tested. Doesn't mean there's not higher somewhere, but he had very high numbers, okay? So, in order to accommodate the Traffic Safety Board, when they requested from me if I would put speed bumps in, I initially said, yes, we would go ahead and do it on a pilot program. I sent letters last year, hand-delivered, not mailed, hand-delivered to all the residents, and asked them for a response, pro or con. It was close to fifty-fifty on who did and who did not want the speed humps, okay? Since then, I've received numerous emails, phone calls, letters, correspondence from residents, again, for or against. I've had attorneys on the street threaten to sue me because I wasn't going to put them in, and somebody may get hurt if they're not there. Uh, to the other end of the spectrum were people, uh, who were, didn't want the speed humps, and they were gonna be put in front of their houses, were adamantly against it, and they wanted no part of it. Now, understand, the design was done by Donato, an engineering firm. Highway just didn't go out and say, hey, we're gonna put one here, here, and here. No. Chris went to Donato, and they, they did a drawing of where they should go, where they would be effective, okay? These were engineers that do this sort of thing. We did mark the street, and that opened the floodgates again. So as of today, I am just inclined to leave well enough alone, because it just isn't worth it to upset a neighborhood for this. I know the people who want these are gonna be very mad, and they're gonna accuse me of waffling and going back and forth, but at the end of the day, okay, it's the opposition now that I'm hearing from that I have to consider. And again, you know, we just paved the road, it's a nicely paved road. The speakers were very correct. There's big yards in these, uh, in these houses, there's big right-of-ways, okay? Uh, they have the C-curves, the flat curves. Cars could go around speed humps potentially without hitting raised curves. It's a consideration. So I've spoken to Chris about this. He agrees with me, due to the, the contentious opposition or for this on both sides, that we agreed, if we're gonna pilot this, it should be somewhere else. So I'm not putting it out there. I've stopped any forward motion with this, okay? Um, because I just don't think that this is the best thing for the entire neighborhood. Uh, and again, to answer the question, the fire service, the fire department did give their authorization saying there would be no problems. However, uh, the police department did have some reservations about response time. So even there, it was fifty-fifty. So, you know, it's, again, that's all I'm hearing, is the pro and con, but there's no overwhelming way to go one way or another. That all being said, I think leaving well enough alone and figuring out some other spot may be the best course of action for this.
And, and Pat, I, I mentioned before, you kind of have an unenviable position with some of these, um, but, you know, I appreciate your deliberation on the matter, and I understand it's not been an easy, um, decision to arrive at. Um, I'm going to, you know, a little bit, so we, by consent, we have an adoption of a, of an agenda item to award installation of radar speed feedback signs on Brompton and Park Club Lane. We have go-off agenda to add, um, the installation of the radar speed feedback signs to Westfield. Um, at least that, you know, we're taking a proactive approach. I know they're on Cayuga and the Village and on Garrison.
Right.
So-
Yeah, no, I, I think that'd be a good idea. I mean, I, you know, I, I think there is some problem there with cars cutting Egger Road and, and going down Westfield. Um, I do agree, you know, in so what, with traffic safety, I just don't think speed humps, you know, are, are the answer- know, are are the answer everywhere, maybe in some select areas, if people were really for it, but I'm just not seeing it here in Westfield. I'm just, I I don't want to, you know, be the, that part of it where, you know, I'm causing all this dissension between the neighbors. And I'm telling you, I don't want to be at their block party, it's just one thing for the.
Aw, gee.
All right, well, I appreciate that. Thank you, Pat, and I'm sure the people here were happy with that decision tonight, and I can really imagine Malley getting more. But, thank you.
I just want to add something. I want to thank you, I didn't write down your name in the pink sweater. Thank you for coming forward and sharing your personal story, and I do think, in addition to what we discussed, it's an ADA requirement to accommodate someone, and to put a speed pump near her house would be a problem. So we've made the right decision, but I'm just pointing that out as another reason.
Again, it's the highway superintendent's call the other day, Pat's made the decision, we're gonna have to still find some way to do some speed mitigation, despite of that, because we're altering the path, or the path's been altered, so we'll deal with that. Is there anybody further who wishes to address the town?
We had a few other names.
I'm sorry, I don't have, I have the, those were both lists.
My name is Jerry De Cosmo, and I live on Meyer Road. I wasn't able to be here at the last town board meeting where they were addressing the illegal immigrants coming to the town, so I wanted to voice my opinion on that as well. I'm here to speak against the importation of the illegal immigrants into our community. According to the Center for Immigration Studies, July twenty-twenty-three, we are not a sanctuary town, county, or city. Are these people vetted in any sense, including their health status, criminal background, or their level of asylum seeker, which statistically ninety-five percent don't qualify for? If you claim they are vetted, the citizens should have access to the proof. These people are economic refugees. There are legal avenues for that type of immigration. Bringing unskilled labor into this area will only adversely affect our economy further. My grandparents came here in the early nineteen hundreds legally following the rules. They had to have a sponsor, usually a family member who was willing to provide housing, and they were expected to become a contributing member of society, not a drain on the system. They weren't provided any free handouts. You are promoting chaos, lawlessness, and subverting our country. A country without a border is just a landmass. When I pass by the current taxpayer-supported immigrant housing at the Red Roof Inn on Flint Road, I see traffic cones blocking the driveways, clothing hanging off the trees, and the uniformed National Guard patrolling the parking lots. It is the appearance of a minimum-security prison. At the last town board meeting, you bragged that there were less calls than before. I wonder why? Our children, as a result of the COVID pandemic, have suffered documented learning loss of as much as a year and a half, according to the Harvard Graduate School of Education. How are the teachers teachers to address this and bring them up to grade level if now they are forced to deal with illegal children who come with distractions, including language and cultural barriers, to say the least? It is our children, including my grandchildren, who attend local school districts, who will continue to suffer learning delays. How interesting is it that children of U.S. citizens need to enter school with current vaccines, but a thirty-day delay is granted to the illegals? We've also heard tuberculosis is a concern. Teachers are not equipped to deal with this unplanned influx. The inflation rate is three times was it what it was pre-pandemic. The cost of everything has gone up exponentially. We cannot afford to spend money on people who don't belong here. As a senior on a fixed income, I'm against my taxes being used for people who break our laws to enter this country. We feel more unsafe, and that is a responsibility of the government to protect the citizens. Immigrants coming from regions where crime is rampant are more likely to commit crimes here. These people are the first wave, but they won't be the last. At what point will you simply release them into the community, as is being done in the true border states? What future look, the future looks bleak for our community and ultimately the country. The welfare system where everything is free is unsustainable. You know that, but you continue to pander, to what end? To anyone who feels the need to be compassionate and caring towards these people, I suggest that they open their homes to them, provide them with housing, healthcare, food, and clothing. I'm sure we could create a list to make that happen. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Tom.
Tom, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Supervisor Brian Kulpov, town board members. My name is Thomas Frank, I reside at five four oh three Main Street in the village of Williamsville in the town of Amherst, and I want to thank you for allowing me these three minutes to comment on matters that involve the Amherst Central Greenway Parks and Trails, the LWRP, the Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan, connecting the Westwood Pharmaceutical Country Club, the golf course, to the UB North Campus, Elicott Creek Trailway, that's where the nine eleven ceremony was held, that was Susan Greilich, used to be the supervisor, the Amherst State Park, and the Joint Board Glen Park to the Island Park right outside the door here. That the Elicott Creek, Tonawanda Creek are tributary connections to the Niagara River Greenway, the two thousand and fifty relicensing of the Niagara Power Project settlement. Moreover, Tonawanda Creek and Elicott Creeks have cultural and historical connections to the Erie Canal National Heritage Corridor, the bicentennial in two thousand and twenty-five. That there's a a real opportunity here where the canal comes into Tonawanda Creek by the Historic Museum, is one of the most geographically historic places in the country. That's why New York became the financial capital of the world. Most people don't even know it's down there. The, and the last thing that I wanted to mention, Jacqueline Berger, the council member, has to do with the Climate Change Committee Task Force, should be looking at the UB School of Architecture and Planning, the one region forward as far as this project, and they should be trying to include the Williamsville, Amherst, and Sweet Home School districts in the project, having to do, you're looking at about a five-year development project that extends through two thousand and fifty, and will have between a two-hundred-and-fifty and a five-hundred-million-dollar economic impact on the region. This used to be a part of Niagara County. Thank you very much, that, there's an opportunity here.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. And the resolution does include somebody from the Regional Institute at UB Architecture Schools.
Yeah, there's actually two people coming from there.
We appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to move to end public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I would ask the town clerk to please read the consent agenda.
Deputy Supervisor Buckeye, one. Councilmember Berger, one. Councilmembers of Calhoun, one. Comptroller, one. Contract Compliance, one, two, three, four, five. Engineering, one, two. Highway, one. Human Resources, one, two, three, four, five, six. Planning, one, three. Police, one. Senior Services, one. Sewers Plant, sixteen, one, two. Communications, one. Refer to Attorney, two, refer to Attorney, three, refer to Attorney, four, refer to Attorney, and five, refer to Attorney.
Okay, next, I'm gonna motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A couple items that weren't on the consent agenda this evening. The first of those was Resolution seven seventy-nine, request for a public hearing on the acquisition of eminent domain of a boulevard mall parcel subject to conversation in executive session. I'll at this time motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second item, going to motion to withdraw Resolution seven ninety-five for this evening as the property in question, twenty-two Chateau Terrace, is currently involved in Article seventy-eight matter. There was a hearing just this afternoon, this town board has yet to meet with an attorney to speak with the, with regards to specific deliberations, so I'll, I'm gonna motion to withdraw that at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I would motion to move off of agenda for the purposes of adding additional, one additional town-wide traffic calming component, installation of a radar speed feedback sign. There's a motion to go off agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, I would motion to.
They put up the former.
Yeah, I know, we, we, so we adopted it via.
Consent, I know, I'm just pointing out you can use that language.
Yeah, so I'm gonna motion to, well, I think we still have to award it based on the bids received, and I have to make a motion to ask our engineering department to to request a change order proposal for an addition of a, of the, of the, of the, what is it called? The installation of a radar speed feedback sign at Westfield.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I will work with you to write that one up.
Did you get all of that?
So, yeah, we're requesting a proposal, a change order proposal for that additional side. With that, I'm going to motion return to regular agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is public expression, a second round, I motion to open that at this time.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna motion to exit public expression.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?